It's it's the 2023, it's Milwaukee eight that I didn't want to. Friend of mine got it and he doesn't have a a permit or a license. I loaded mine on the trailer for Pennsylvania. Yeah, it's brand new, it's got seventy-eight miles on it, or seventy-nine, sorry. Yeah, I'm surprised you noticed. Well, you couldn't hear it, that's for one thing. That's right. Because I told the guy, you get, he, he, the guy up there, the dealer, will sell me one for fifteen grand, which is an awesome deal. And I said to him, I said, you know, the only problem is, I gotta spend three grand on it before I drive it. He said, why? I said, exhaust is a thousand bucks because I can't hear it. I said, a seat and sissy bar for the old lady is a thousand bucks. You know, and forward controls is close to a thousand bucks.
We need all those.
Yeah. Because I mean, I'm right now on this one, I'm sitting with my feet in the middle, I feel like I'm on a.
Right. He's gonna be late, but he's coming.
Who?
That's what he said last time. He has the contracts now.
Who? Jason?
Yeah, because I'm not cutting the check, and so I have a contract. Yes, thank you, thank you. Can we get ready to go to, can we get ready to talk about meeting?
Okay.
I don't want to say anything, so I got it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
There's nothing after the orange.
No, I just, I just, I always, I always go through them a little bit. I just gave you the. United's jumping up quick, ain't it?
It's insane.
Oh, it is, and and.
But it makes sense, and I'm, I am supposed to be paying.
Yes. Yeah, everything, everything's supposed to be paid, we just need to keep it like a separate file.
Yep.
Because everything is going to be included in what we go for from FEMA.
So my question for like the United and stuff like that, the spreadsheet is broken out by road. I don't know how to break out that kind of stuff by road. Do I just start another column of uh material art? I have to do it by road, I don't believe.
Well, I mean, for right now, as long as we have a a a total and everything. After they talk for Thursday, are you gonna meet with them, you and Joe? I can't, I'm I'm I'm, I'll be in VA.
Well, it's, yes, I'm going.
Okay.
Jason, so Jason is the EMD, he's he's the direct contact for.
Um, find out how they need it separated. By road or whatever, then Joe can actually help you do that. Because he knows, you know, you have to make a new column on the sheet, but he knows which ones.
So Jason should have some information first anyways.
Yeah.
He's supposed to be doing some homework. Um, and then. Another question we had, and it's gone. Oh, I know now. So boys have had masses of amounts of overtime. I know that all gets included. Do their regular forty hours get counted towards this? Or is the forty hours their forty hours and then the overtime? I have the paper in here that who's gonna explain that.
Yeah.
Okay? Yep. Uh, it's seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance. Roll call tonight, we have myself, Amy Freak, uh Joe Marco, and Spiker, and our assistant Melissa, who I would die without. And did you guys get a chance to look at the meeting minutes um on the email?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, I have it right here. Sign it. There's a correspondence, do you have a correspondence?
There's, it's sort of in there. So we'll probably want to talk about that in a second.
Yep. So we have some correspondence um from NHMA for the coaching and technical assistance program, which we have been accepted.
Yep. Yeah, we got it.
We got a big W.
The CTAP program, it was, it was a small municipality program, under ten thousand residents. As far as help to find grant monies and federal funds for small towns like ours. We were accepted for one of ten towns, we were one of two towns under twenty-five hundred um population. It's not a, it's not a grant, it's a a coaching program that helps small towns like ourselves, who only have three man boards, no town manager, stuff like that, to help find funds to replace road culverts, building updates, whatever, whatever project you have going on. It's, it takes a lot of help from whoever's applying, that municipality, but they help find the funds that could help make your project bigger.
Um, so the company that is doing it is our net development group, and we have to meet with them, so is that something you're willing to?
That's, I mean, obviously, I'm willing to do it, but I I think it would at least require a initial meeting potentially from the board.
This is a consultation. Yeah, so I guess.
The project.
They asked me to to call them, to get them and have them.
If you want to make me the the go through whatever, that's fine.
I have signed it, so. Information.
Will do.
They finally updated to the state.
Landfill post closure annual.
Yeah, remember I told you Novus was supposed to do it?
Yep.
Or or and they were late, and that's what that letter was.
Okay.
And I told you that the guy from the state said some of them moved back.
Oh, yeah.
They finally got it in.
Okay, awesome, so we're all set.
Yeah, we're good.
And this is the whole board is here.
Yeah, there's one for the operational inspections that they did on the working transfer, and then a close report.
All right.
On the uh other.
All right, we have Upper Valley Lake Son of the Beach Land Commission that we have been part of.
We voted to not do it last year or this year because with, when they, we went to do the master plan through them, not, in addition to that, main thing you get from them is a book.
Oh.
And 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 some other stuff. For them to help with the master plan would have been twenty thousand dollars. So at that point, we voted to not rejoin them.
Okay. Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Right, because what we do get from them, we can give municipal association.
Okay. This is a letter from the DOT about fuel um fuel management system, access to the fuel management system.
Yeah, that's where we get the fuel card.
Oh. I guess I don't know if this is for them. Oh, so this should be for Joe. They want one.
Yeah. Yeah, so Joe or Joe have to decide who's doing what. Yeah, because this is just to get the information.
Okay.
This is for portal for you to go in and get the transitions. You know, get all the transactions and stuff out. This isn't actual functioning of the card.
Okay.
And this is for the retrieving information on the website they're setting up.
Do you deal with that, with the fleet card? I do not. Okay. Should I give that to Joe? In Joe's box? Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Um, I would like to update, this is from John Wizik regarding the Classics Road up on Pinnacle, and I just want to update. Did you send the letter?
I have not sent a letter to him since we closed it to the general public. If there's any further, and I mean, if you want me to, I will. Has there, has there been any further? Has there been any further action?
Oh, yeah.
Or ask?
Yeah, John Wizik, two five three Pinnacle. So uh Michael Myers still comes up, but he's respecting the signs that are up. So he'll just do a U-turn next to where the road's closed sign is, Joe open, uh open it up. And then it'll just take off, so, but he's still.
Okay, but he's not going on the class six anymore.
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, I mean, as far as France, you know, that's, that's him coming up there and turning around there is is.
That's all.
Yeah. You know, as long as he's not doing the burnouts and everything, but you want me to still send him some, or you want to let it slide for now?
I would like to send it.
Okay, no problem, I will do that.
Is it worth limiting the access to the road during daylight hours?
Well, it's actually, right now, it's closed due to the mud because we have to have it passable to maintain the cemetery.
Yep.
So it's closed, period.
That's fine, but even for future, just for this gentleman's headache's sake, during daylight hours, it stays light out until what, nine o'clock right now, give or take? I think.
Well, I don't know how we can set a limit on that, however, there is another option. We can make an agreement with Mr. Wizik to maintain access to the cemeteries to fulfill our liability for taking care of the cemeteries and grant the road back to him. That would have to go through a vote of the town. I mean, it would go to his property and everything, but it would have to be a vote. But we'd have to make sure that we maintain UC John for the cemetery because we have to maintain it. Those are our two options. You know, but as far as limiting, we may try it, I don't know how that would fly. I'd have to do some research with the municipal association to see. But uh, I mean, as long as it's running, but we can keep it closed.
Uh, just to show my worry is that once you take that sign away, uh, we're gonna have activity going up there like at twelve thirty at night.
Yeah.
And if we could somehow restrict that, I think it would definitely up until maybe we can afford.
I'll look into what we can do as far as limiting, as far as the time.
Is some kind of bars and gates where you can close the road?
Yes, close.
It is. It is. The road is, the road is gated right now. But that doesn't mean that anyone can't go up there, run up the road, open the gate, run up the road, close the gate, and not care at any time of day. And with this man's house being within a hundred yards of that gate, that would change animals of various nature being around that road. That leads me to believe that he's got a bit more of a concern as far as evening and and nighttime travel than some others may.
Yeah, you can't really see anything, it's the lighting up there, nothing to see.
I'll dig into what we can do as far as time and stuff, because there could be some kind of limitation we can put.
Uh, may I ask?
I I will do that, I was hanging on till I talked to these guys to see if they still wanted to do it after we closed the road.
Anything you can do.
All right, timeout, we're losing control.
Maybe, maybe it's a permissible request to pay right out.
No bashing. It's right now, it's, right now, it's closed for mud, and in the interim, while it's closed for mud, we'll research what's the best plan of attack. So we'll move forward from that. Okay. This is, Joe, this is the compliance um thing for the annual report, is that what we did?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the first thing. Yeah, when I saw that email I got then.
Okay.
Lo and behold, they got it done.
There it is.
Great thousand a year, they shouldn't have to be told.
Yeah. Broadband Initiative, the National Collaborative for Digital Equity. So they want to use um the data that they have, if that's the right one.
Where they want to map.
Yes, they want to map using the records that they previously had. It's the nine-one-one directory they're trying to update. Um, and, sorry, I'm sorry. The New Hampshire Broadband Mapping Initiative is trying to update their records with the nine-one-one records that they have, and they just want to make sure we don't have updated information since then. Oh. So it's basically just giving them the green light to go ahead and use that information. Yes. Would they be able to use that information cleanly? Or would I have to then go into something for them?
It's a digital image, I'm not sure exactly what they're looking for with their overruns.
I will reach out and ask. And those are updated in May? Return check, we have sent them a letter, we have not heard back yet. Um, this is an email, more than two residents of Cash Street have come in to complain about the down limbs that were left on the side of the road. One woman has said that helled limbs and trees are rolling onto the road and covering her and her neighbor's driveways. Another suggested defilling the town for their work on the cleanup roadside. The last one said that they understood this was a holiday weekend, but quote, this is ridiculous.
May I address that?
Yes.
Okay, the trimming was done for eversores by Wright Tree. And the way Wright Tree Service was working is they have one crew comes through, cuts everything down, leaves it lay, and then the following day or two later, another crew comes through and chip it. Um, having the same issue there, it's nothing to do with the town, the town did not do it, it's Wright Tree Service. Uh, the Cash Street homes should have had everything picked up by now. I'm still waiting on them to do what they got from my place yesterday.
Yeah, I didn't think it was, we did.
No, no.
I thought, yeah, I saw it right down there.
Slow, I mean, I'll take, but it, I mean, it was weather and everything else.
Yeah, but it has been cleaned up, and I don't think that this letter was to say we did anything, it was more just.
Informative that they were, right.
They really upset them.
Well, they thought it was, a couple of them thought it was, I had one come up to me.
I don't know what this health trust thing is, that's just an FYI that if we ever have somebody join the health insurance for the town, there is some changes that were made, this is simply an FYI. We don't have anybody on the health insurance at this time. That I need the new owner's information, but I think I have it now. That's the association fee for Loon Lake, you just sold the Loon Lake property. Oh, okay. Because it's going forward, they should be taking care of that. Oh, I got it, I got it, okay. So you think you have. I think I have that information now. Okay. So I'm sorry. That was in there a while. All right, next we have, I'm gonna go a little bit out of order here. The ballot clerks, I was informed that ballot clerks need to be reappointed? Yes. But that's a very simple thing? It should be, we just need to make sure that they do want to actually be reappointed. And then I, there was an updated email from Bruce saying that it didn't have to be done by July fifteenth, as he originally thought. Okay. Um, but we do need to get it done soon so that we can start the whole process before the election. Okay. Especially if we're gonna have a special meeting at some point, they have to be appointed before that. Um, update on the dot gov. Um, we have been approved, I gave authorization last week for the dot gov. They will be sending out the emails with further, which I have not seen yet in my email. Um, they did, um, I forwarded it to Paul, and Paul is taking care of it. Paul is awesome, he is indeed. Um, the Boulder Vale Bridge.
Boulder Vale Bridge has been having an issue. The last storm made the issue twice as bad, it's had a sinkhole forming on the Grantham Highway ten corner. You know, Grantham side of the bridge, closest to Highway ten. That corner is a sinkhole developing under, so it's gonna be closed indefinitely. It's gonna go on the list for FEMA to look at because it's from storm damage. And we should possibly have them look at Brighton Bridge too, because we may be able to get a complete replacement on it out of FEMA because it was a considerable sized hole developed in it that Joe took care of.
Right, so that will bring me to the FEMA update. So I met um Jason, our emergency medical director, who's gonna be here, he's on his way to report, he'll be here in a minute. Um, he's a direct contact with Homeland Security, so um he reached out to me to ask if I wanted to come down and and join in, so I did. And it was actually just kind of a pre-meeting with FEMA, just to kind of get us a little bit skilled for this because it's their, they said they're federal agents, that they're just gonna want factual information and, you know, run around nothing, just have to be very factual and have any um information that we can. Um, and Jason is supposed to be getting the, they want GPS coordinates of the damage and lengths of damage and roads. And when they come out, we're gonna take them to both bridges because both of those are heavy impact and heavy costs, so the most heavily impacted roads, we are gonna take them to. One thing they did mention really quick is they're gonna wanna see our procurement policy. Do we have one?
As in, you know, purchasing the the materials? I mean, our 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 system goes through the highway department, I mean, we actually have no, that's all done through Joe.
So what they said is if we don't have an official procurement policy in place, they, it'll fall back onto the states.
The state's policy.
Yes. So, and I guess there's only like one or two towns that don't have them.
Yeah, I mean, basically, you know, it comes out of his budget, large expenditures above and beyond what's already budgeted, you know, we make adjustments for it.
Um, so I, so I got an email um for a survey, I filled out a survey um for the town to report that we were impacted, um, how we were impacted, an estimation of damages just as a beginning step, and then met with FEMA, and so the the good news is we had multiple storms because if we didn't have that second storm after June seventeenth, eighteen storm, if we didn't have that other one, we wouldn't have met the requirements. That second storm put us, so that it's gonna make it much easier. And what they're trying to do, so typically FEMA will try to do storm by storm, like event by event, and not the whole, like this has been happening for a month. And what this group that came on um last week said was they have indicated it has basically rained every single day for the entire month. And so they think they're gonna be able to just blanket it from June seventeenth to July seventeenth. So that it's just an easier process that way. We need to, does, Joe and Joe and little Joe should be thinking, keeping track of equipment hours when doing repairs? Do you know, if we do that?
I don't know that he separates. We can get him to start doing that.
Okay. So what?
Before we move on from that question, actually, would we be able to factor in our machine maintenance into and from those equipment hours, is that what you're referencing?
No, so they just want, I mean, for fuel costs, so they. So they are, they just want.
Operational.
Bear, so when we do all repairs moving forward.
Yep.
We do repaired pre-storm.
Sure.
So, you know, we don't make the culvert bigger, we don't make the culvert keg different concrete, if it was stone before, we just pre-storm condition.
Yep.
Because that's what they're gonna fund.
Yep.
If they choose to do so.
That's what I'm getting at, though, I'm not talking about as far as roads, I'm talking about as far as our equipment goes. Because we have increased usage hours now on graders, dump trucks, backhoes, all of that.
I'm sure if.
And their machine maintenance. And their machine maintenance comes into play when we've been running our machines for 40 days straight.
Go ahead. They do.
I mean, if we've, if we've got,
Right.
If we've got an every 50-hour maintenance schedule, and these machines have been running for hundreds of hours on it, I mean, that should be taken care of.
Right, but if we, how do we have them keep track of that?
Every day is at least eight hours. I mean, whatever the man-hours are for overtime would be your machine hours too. You would just have to figure out where you spend.
Jason?
Yes?
You're here. I have your folder. I took copies of what I needed. Do you have GPS locations? Yeah? So we're gonna need those. So do we need to create a team to do that? Because we aren't gonna get any money if we don't have GPS locations and damage areas. For Thursday, yes. Wait, you, what? Well, Jason, they're, well, they're gonna meet with you. You're the EMD.
Right.
Yeah, so that's.
I mean, it's basically been pretty much known that we needed GPS locations for all of these sites the whole time along the way, correct?
And do we have them?
Apparently not. Probably take a five-minute reading on a GPS if you really had to map it from one end to the other, but it can all be, kind of, relatively short amount of time.
So they want a GPS coordinate from the beginning of the road of where it was. They say, not necessarily the intersections, they just want the sections of roads that were damaged. They want a GPS coordinate from the beginning to the end, is what they're requiring.
So I can stand in the middle of the road, and I give it a GPS coordinate, go in on the line, and I can send it.
So you need your problem, where the beginning is, where the beginning is, where the end is. So, just to take a cash street, for example, you're gonna need, you need it right by Norma's old house. That's where it's currently, right there. All the way up to, probably just past that.
Yeah, but when you're in a long area, it's just.
But actually, now I want to use the coordinates of that.
Do you like helping out? Do you mind?
Without, can I, can I speak? Without overstepping my boundaries, with you being the emergency coordinator, I think that all of this would be a lot more sound coming from one source tomorrow. If you're available from 1:00 to 3:00, why not whatever you can't get done, be tackled after that? I mean, if we've got somebody that wants to do Winter Road or whatever, that's fine. But tack, but divide and conquer on roads that may be overlapped by three hours worth of work tomorrow might just be. I got facial needs. I got facial needs. That's why I'm saying that I think within three hours we can handle it tomorrow. And if Kim wants to shoot coordinates from Winter Road tonight, tomorrow, whatever, whatever's left, we handle, and I'll, I'll jump in and tackle a portion or whatever. We have to have them by Thursday, but.
Thursday morning at 9:00. So the United Construction Bills you were asking about? You need those by 9:00. Yep, and the bridge, Hanson Bridge thing, copy that? Yep. And do you need those pictures that?
I need three hours. I know it's, I know it's part of your day. I think anything that you don't accomplish.
People have been sending pictures to Melissa, so we're also gonna have, if you could have those printed out?
We've got locations noted on where they are, correct?
The street, yeah.
Okay.
Are you gonna be available, Ed, on Thursday?
If I need to be available, I'll be available.
I wouldn't mind if you were available. What are you doing on Thursday, hope? Just calling sick. Town hall, yes, town hall.
So, just wanna throw this out, any damage, class six roads like ours, need consideration? I know. Sorry?
We asked, we asked them, and they said flat out, no.
But, if there's a FEMA disaster declaration, there is a way for individuals to buy.
Yes, there is a program, Jason has a thing.
Because I know the town cannot provide any funding, but this is a town tax base money. That's why I have this question.
Yeah, I asked. Six and for private roads makes it absolutely no for both.
So what's the procedure in contact as an individual? As an individual, they said, dial 211, and you'd rate the assistance program.
All right, at this time, oh wait, we have new items. Fee updates, what is this? That was.
That's not even close to being ready, because we still have to run it through the board to get everything together as far as numbers, so that's not even ready for us.
Okay. So I, now we'll open it up. Anybody have anything? Other than?
I have a couple of them. So here's the contract that we've passed. For, between the fire department and the town, I'm assuming you guys decided to the town where they oversee and look at, and then we can go from there. I'll cut you the time.
The asshole in me wants to say that if we're gonna bring copies, now it's gonna be great enough for the whole select board.
Sorry, I didn't, I was running, right?
Sorry.
I've said it over again, I'll give you a go for it.
Why, I'm up front, right?
So now we let our boy read that. Yeah, that, that.
Anything questions, concerns, I mean, I can try to answer, but like I said, assuming you're a lawyer, or.
Yeah.
The other two things, I'm just gonna kind of sound selfish, I'm sorry. Joe had mentioned before, I did work 13 hours for the town during some of this work, pollen growler, back and forth, and I know other people worked at times, but I'm compensated for it, so I'm questioning that, if that was still happening. I was more than happy to do it, but.
We voted on an amount and everything, you should have.
Okay.
So I just need a time card?
Yeah, just need a time card.
Time card, with the days you worked? I can get you one.
Okay. All right, I'll see you later. And then, as an EMD, which again, if you don't mind doing this, you guys can comment on what's good for your position. Nothing is volunteer anymore. I'm sure the EMD in the past has never had to do much. But I'm, you know, I'm cutting my days short, missing days of time to run my business also. Just a thought about an hourly rate or something like that as an EMD. I know it's not something I'm gonna do all the time, but, you know, again, Amy Convent, just last, we, we both had it quick, we're early, go meet with Homeland Security for a couple hours. I better spend a couple hours tomorrow to get my GPS coordinates. And then again, Thursday, I'm gonna spend probably half the day, because I have to go around FEMA's all these places. That's money that's not going in my pocket, because I'm not on my job, so just something to consider.
So, a little update, as far as I have on the access road to the constant fog, all along the road. I reached out to quite a few different people at Fish and Game, and I finally got ahold of Sullivan County Fish and Game Commissioner, Bruce Temple. Very nice gentleman, very responsive. He called me about, and he said he was going to get ahold of one of their people who does roads. They all have their own, but I remember there were a couple people to maintain all of that, and that he would get that. Well, he did, and he got me a message today. Unfortunately, today was one of my busy days at work, so I couldn't reach out to him. So I hope to have a better update, but at least there's some conversation going on.
Yeah.
So my question to the board is, knowing that all the land around that lake is privately owned, the water is, it's a state, state-owned, if there's any pushback about, or confusion about the fact that the access road is supposed to be privately owned, and where you are involved, what kind of questions do you want me to ask?
Jeez.
Yeah, this is why I'm asking the board, I can ask, if they want to maintain it, if they tell me that it's a private access, and either the private entity, or the town should maintain it. I need to know what question I'm going in.
Absolutely okay if they say it's private and we have to maintain it, if they tell us how we can maintain it.
Yes, I think we're more so looking for a go-ahead, a permission to fix it, and the means to properly do so, than a denial from anybody.
Permission. Yeah, thank you. Hi.
I have a couple of things. First, I would like to commend our new town clerk for the wonderful job that he's doing.
Great.
He's very personable and polite, and he just gets right on you if you come and say you've got something. He's right on you. So I wanted to just bring that to everybody's attention. And then I'm wondering, when are we gonna start filming the camera and the video stuff for this hall that loaded on back in March?
Things have kinda got to the back.
I know.
Numerous times.
Right.
During meetings, and we had more to deal with at that point, but we're nearing a deadline that I put on paper myself. So if you think I'm about to nick or fault on that, you'd be wrong. But I'd like to tell you it'll be done by the deadline that it is. Which would be September 16th, 14th.
All right, and then one other question. Is anybody doing anything about that camper that dropped from your house?
Gone.
That's, no, it's not gone. He moved it up the driveway.
It's not gone. It's still there.
Okay, that's what I asked if he had moved it, and you said no.
Well, that's fine, I think it's fair.
Well, actually, we could validate our wedding there.
Yeah.
It's, we have to do, we're in the process, we're doing some meeting things, and it's all, yeah.
Forget about that.
No. Brenda, do you think I forget about it? I live across the street from it.
I know, I know.
Okay, that's all.
And you already did this, only you weren't working on a 10-year thing there. And that happened, so I was trying to work on that. Kind of cycle a lot of stuff on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a clue.
Make a motion, we go into closed session for 91 AC.
I second. We're going into closed session. If you don't, and we're just gonna come out and end the meeting afterwards unless, so don't have to wait. Thank you.
Go ahead, everybody.
Okay, I only have a real quick question.
Yeah.
Or you can write it down. Whatever your email is, I mean, send you pictures.
Oh. Just to my personal, I don't have anything.
All right, and I will work on a time card with you.
I can actually email it to you at the fire department.
Oh, yeah, just do that. Because I have to look up the dates.
Yep, I need the dates and the hours.
Okay.
Okay?